There's a girl out walking around when I came in.
Did you know that they raised one, they went up in value?
Nine billion.
Nine billion dollars in five days.
Wow.
From that, they have officially replaced porn as the number one sock thing on the internet.
Oh, that's a good thing.
So, um.
Awesome, or is...
I've walked anywhere for like ten years. I've walked 12 miles outside of here.
We were hoping it was the police department's base station.
Driving down the street and my kids are s- whoop, no, this is from California. We're driving down the street and my kids are s-
(mimicking a car horn)
Mom, that's out.
Don't worry.
I want to meet.
Okay, Tina's here, we can start now. I'd like to call our work session to order. All members of the city council are present this evening. We've invited, well, we didn't invite, I'm going to invite Molly, Andrew, if you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Are you okay with that? Thanks. After which, council member Sid Lamone will lead us, will give some opening remarks.
Do you understand? I love the afternoon.
I love the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father and mother, we thank thee for the afternoon we have to come here today, mayor, council staff, and citizens, to be able to make decisions on the, on behalf of our community that will ensure our, our city and, and be able to plan for the future. We thank thee for all of our many blessings, for the community that we live in, for the protection that we have from our first responders. We thank thee for the opportunity we have to serve and the right that we have to do that in our country. Praise us that we can have a civil meeting tonight, be respectful of one another's ideas, be open-minded, and we bless that we can go without the speaking safety, knowing that, that we are protected here and we love being able to say these things. In thy name I send Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. Did we verify then that the streaming is working? So, no complaints yet from outside the room? All right. There is a change on tonight's agenda. Scott just informed me, item number five, there was a miscommunication, so the school district will reschedule for August 9th. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
No, we do need an executive session for a legal issue.
Okay. So whoever makes the motion, if they could include those changes?
Mayor, I'll make the motion. We have no discussion. Motion for approval of the agenda as written with the removal, postponement of item five, the Alpine School District presentation, and the inclusion of a executive session to discuss reasonable pending or imminent litigation or other legal issues.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Eric, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay. Item number six is a discussion on Pleasant Grove Municipal Court in relation to the new public safety building. Give you a background on this. In the PSB Subcommittee, while we were discussing the construction of the new facilities and options, a couple of the members of the committee asked if, if when the judge retires, we were going to continue to have a municipal court. And the, you know, the council and the mayor, that really wasn't our decision at that place to have that discussion. And so, we decided that we would forward that question on to the council. We asked the staff to do some research on costs, on what it would cost if we were to try and move the court services to another jurisdiction. And so I think, Scott, you've gotten with your team and kind of prepared some information for us.
Yes, we do, and I'm trying to pull it up here, so those that are here can follow along.
And it's not just a financial decision. I think that there are many other considerations, like service level to the community, the volume. We also need to be considerate that we have employees of the court. And just because we have a discussion like this that has to take place in an open, in an open meeting, we need to be respectful of those people. They, they can be, I don't know, really hurt by a discussion like this in public when, when they think that this discussion might compromise their employment.
Thank you, mayor. That does become a concern on our end as staff when we start talking about these things. But we did tend to focus on the numbers. We had discussions about the level of service, meaning if one of our residents had a speeding ticket, they can come and get it resolved here at Pleasant Grove Municipal Court. Without the municipal court, they'd need to go to American Fork. So there's a little bit more of a drive and, and then-
So Scott, we know that for sure, that if-
Yeah.
If it doesn't, if we don't have a court here, American Fork is the next jurisdiction?
The judge informed me that it's actually, it would be Provo to the Utah County Justice Court.
He's here and he just stood. Judge, did you want to say a few things, please?
If the court closes down, it will go to the nearest, the nearest Justice Court, county justice court. Goes to the Utah County.
Don't put that in my face. I'm going to have to talk into the microphone.
Just hold it. Because they will be able to hear you on the streaming.
I don't care if they do or not.
Sorry, Judge, go ahead.
It'll go to the county justice court. This happens on the state, I'm on the justice court board. Whenever they close, it used to be that it would go to the district court. District courts are not handling any justice court business, except by statute, those that were currently doing it. For example, American Fork does, American Fork District Court, or the Department of the District Court, and American Fork handles American Fork, and as well as Spanish Fork. And that's by statute, and that won't change. But if they ever change, then they would either go to the county. So if you decide to close this court, they will go to Provo.
So, so the responsibility would go to Provo?
And it will go to the-
To the county court? But it's wherever they have their district court?
Go to the county justice court.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I mean, really, once we crunched the numbers, the numbers kind of told the story that, as you can see here, for our fiscal year 2016, we generate revenue by having a municipal court. So that's the court fines, $440,000 last year. And then we have our, our basic expenses. So we pay, the personnel and benefits under judicial, that's the, what we pay the judge and the court clerks and, and the employee cost to actually run a municipal court. But then we have the legal side, so we have some at Tina's time, we have a prosecutor, what we pay prosecutor, and then we have some, also indigent defense. So that is somebody that needs representation in court, they can't afford it. So it's our responsibility as a city to pay for that. So if we don't have the court and we have those same, we don't have the revenues that come in with the court. If you look to the right where it's no municipal court, we still have the expenses of a prosecutor, we still have the expenses of an indigent defense that we're going to have to pay regardless of whether we have the municipal court or not. The beauty of the municipal court is we bring in enough revenue to pay for those. So our recommendation as staff would be to, in the new facility, have the courts here. Because if you look at, if you take the gain, what we had in 2016, and the differential for no municipal court, it's, you know, about $260,000 difference. And if our new court space, let's say in the new building's going to cost 1.5 million after seven or eight years, then we're going to be money behind.
Right.
So if we-
And still paying.
Yes. Yeah, so we'll be still be paying those expenses and, whereas if we would have invested and actually made room for the courts, we'd still have the revenues offsetting.
So, so we can safely say that not having a municipal court, there would be a $260,000 negative swing, right? That's-
In the budget, in the general fund budget.
Plus what you would give up on the loss. So you add the two, it's 260 negative per year compounded as a gross.
Yes.
We, do we know what the cost was on the, the court part of this, on the PSB?
Yeah, the number they had was six, I believe it was about 6,500 square feet. And even at 300, $300 a square foot, that's like 1.8, 1.9 million.
So, yeah, there's, there's six, seven years, is that what you said?
Yeah, it, yeah, so, over time, I mean, initially, we would save money, but over time, we would end up losing money. And that, what that doesn't account for is if we tear this building down, we don't have council chambers. And we were going to do double, double duty with the, the court area, where we were going to have council chambers and, and the court area. Do both and share that space. So if we do away with the courts, that we're still 2,500 square feet of space we're going to need to build just for the council chambers. So we wouldn't save the full 1.8 million because we're probably still going to spend, you know, $500,000 or $600,000 on, on council chambers regardless.
Were there other considerations in addition to just the numbers here that we should know about?
The two big ones were the level of service and where our residents would need to go to get their misdemeanor things taken care of. And then the idea of the council chambers still needing to be built somewhere, even if you don't have a court. So those were the two big ones that-
So Judge, I didn't do an exact count, but I have been watching periodically counting the court calendar cases that come. I think we're about 12 pages, 13 pages on average now. Three to four per page, depending on whether it's a, you know, complete disaster or something lightweight. I mean, we're looking at, what would that be, about 60 cases a week? And that, some of them are just pre-trial, some of them are actual trial, others are just plea in abeyance or hearings, et cetera. What kind of volume of people are we talking about that we would be sending to drive to Provo or some other district?
All of them.
Right.
All of them. In addition to that, police officers, we have to go there for trials. Witnesses will have to go there for trials. I, I don't know what the figures were that they calculated, but in addition to the cost of the prosecutor and of the defendant, the city's also going to have to pay for witness fees and jury fees and things of that. The county, county's not going to pick that up. What they're going to do is take out half of whatever now comes to the city to pay for the judge's salary. So the only thing that the city would get to keep is who is paying for the prosecutor. So if you did an inner local agreement, maybe have the county attorney or whoever picked that up, they're going to lose that income as well.
So Scott, is that reflected in the number, the fact that we would have to pay for prosecution?
The number, I believe, showed the jury fees and the witness fees, isn't that what you did?
Yeah, that's the 2,000, is what we left in there.
And so maybe I got a little lost on the prosecutor, there's an additional prosecutor cost that we're going to have?
Mm.
Or?
I would, I would think that we have a prosecutor, and whether we have a court or not, the prosecutor's going to have to go prosecute our case.
We have the 110,000 in there for the prosecutor if there's no court, so we have it covered.
Whether, whether we keep that person as an employee, or whether we pay the county to prosecute it,
either way, we do have 110 in, in those numbers to cover that.
So the calendar that you send currently is, it represents how many people on a, on a calendar basis? Is that a week, every two weeks?
That's a week.
Every week? And you hold court?
Do that, yes.
Times a year?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine?
I, I think also, that's not in those figures, is, and, I, I have a lot of attorneys out of Salt Lake in my court. On the calendar, though, you know, Ben may recognize someone from out, out of Salt Lake. We do have a lot from out there. They complain enough about coming over to the court. I mean, that's, that's not something that costs money, but it is an additional. Cities would have all done this, trying to get out of it. If I could do it.
Okay. Just rough, rough numbers, and if anybody wants to check the math on that. It looks like 1,800 cases a year would be, people would have to go.
Well, that's, that's in that. That's just what comes in court, you have to factor in. Those that come in on citations, that they're doing traffic for. Now, obviously, that would stay here, but people who come in and, and pay their bail, not reflected on the calendar.
Okay.
Their numbers are somewhere around 3,000.
And what would happen with that if we did not have a?
They'd, they'd go to Provo.
They'd have to take care of that in Provo as well, including traffic school?
If somebody came in for traffic school, would they still need to come to Pleasant Grove to arrange that and then go down there and do the plea in abeyance in Provo? So they'd have the two stops they'd have to make.
They'd have to do that.
So you're looking more like 4,800, 4,800 individuals a year? And Mike, did you, are your numbers included in here as far as prisoner transport?
No, that would all change. And, and just on the officers, just to throw it out, so what, is it 1,850 for a witness fee?
Yeah.
A lot of money, yeah. Yeah, 1,850. So you get, so the way our policies read is, any witness, it's a, it's a state fee, gets 1,850. So whether it's, you know, a three-day trial or a 30-minute trial, the state will pay you $18.50, right?
Right.
So the way our policies read is if the officer is there over an hour, then 1,850 covers an hour, and then after that, that you pay them. So, you know, you add in the expense of, you know, we always pay more when our guys go down to district court because it's, you know, it's a longer process for them to go down to Provo and go through that. So we end up paying overtime for that. Where usually in Pleasant Grove, I, I don't see the overtime requests coming in because they're in and out within the time.
Okay. Scott, are there other considerations that should be included?
I think we've covered them all.
Can, can those other costs of time, manpower, and, and service level be captured in addition to the, the financial ones here and summarized?
Yeah, we could probably figure something out. I mean, if it's-
They don't have to be reduced to dollars as long, I mean, they need to be listed, though.
Okay.
So that, so that the information survives us as far as whatever decision is made.
That's a good point. So we'll take this document and then on the, underneath the numbers, we will list some of the, the service issues that come up with not having a municipal court.
Right. The number of people that do the traffic school, the fines, plea in abeyance, the traveling down to Provo, the officers involved.
Yep, we'll do that.
Council, other items you wanted to bring up?
I have a couple of quick questions. This, this court fines number is just the municipal portion of that, I assume? Because my understanding is the line share goes back to the state or other places?
Correct. That's just what we, we receive after the state takes their position.
And then I had a question about one of the public safety building committee meetings. I thought I heard our architect, Scott, indicate that it was not, not likely that it made sense to, to share a court and a, and council chamber, that the functions of those two buildings, two rooms are very different. Do I recall that correctly?
Yeah, he, he stated that in one of the meetings. I mean, we've talked since then, we've, I mean, we toured some facilities that have joint court and council chambers. It's, I, I don't know if, if Scott Wilkinson's never dealt with that or not, but, I mean, we've seen it, we think it's possible. We think it's cost savings on our end. So I think as the entity that's going to decide what all these are going to be when it's all said and done, that we're going to, we're going to do that, we will combine those. So I, I'm not sure exactly what his issue was or why he thought that was. There's certain regulations the AOC gives us in regards to, you know, the judge has to be under raised dais, and there's certain things that are required for that. But cities have made that work to do both the council chambers and the, the courtroom together.
Linden has a shared facility.
Springville has it?
Springville does?
Yeah, I think Springville had separate.
It's a separate.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a separate house?
Ever since they built it.
Because when we toured it, it was, it was shared.
I think it was separate when we toured it, but-
Yeah, they've got a whole, it's all locked up, the court is, it's very secure.
We went to one in, I want to say either West Jordan or South Jordan. As an adjunct to the mall, some kind of shopping center.
Probably South Jordan.
That was also a, that was also a combined court. What about Sandy?
I don't know, the city I came from, when we built our new facility, we had a joint council chambers court. That's how I know it's possible, we did it.
Judge, you do that currently in Linden, you cover both, do you see any safety and everything is still?
No problem.
How many seats are you thinking of? What, what's the requirement for seating in courts and?
Don't have any requirement. I, I think what you would do is build it to what the city council needs, and it would need courts as well.
It's got to be bigger than what you have now, I mean-
Oh, yeah. Both, both facilities need to be bigger.
I would love to bring over these chairs, though.
The red ones?
The two pews.
We like how it's-
The red chairs.
Right now, we just have a square footage number. I don't think we've sat down and said, this is how many seats it's going to be. We haven't got that level to tell you.
Council, other?
I do. I, I guess, why did this come up? Why is this, why, why was this brought before us?
The Public Safety Committee.
So I guess that's my, my concern is, we're discussing things that should have been discussed during budget discussions, right? These numbers. And I don't think the PSB committee should be talking about departmental organization or costs and things like that. I think that, that in turn throws scare tactics into our departments and things like that. And so I, I guess that should have been cut off. This should have been discussion for budget discussions, in my mind. This, this to me has gone a little too far. We shouldn't be here, we really shouldn't have the judge here tonight talking about this, really. We, we should already be talking about what we need, and that's why we had the, the programming analysis done. And so I, I guess we're running into dangerous ground here when we start allowing or, or having these things come up and talking about different departments and why we should maybe get rid of the courts. We shouldn't, that should never even be in the PSB's preview and the role, and so-
No, I, I would agree with you, councilman. I would err on the side on this one where it is so clear that financially it makes sense to keep it.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
That in this particular case, not addressing a legitimate question when it comes up is, is asking for future problems. And while I, while I agree that, that from a city perspective, it was not promoted, I think that members took it upon themselves to bring it up.
That's fine, I just don't, I think the time and place for that is in the budget discussions if there's concerns about our courts or any other department. And that's something for, for us as a city council to have a discussion.
I would agree with you on that, yeah. Other comments?
I do have a question for the judge. I didn't have a chance to hear from him after his meeting with Scott Whitaker about his programming. So I know that you asked the other department heads-
Right.
If, if they were okay after the programming, and I want to make sure that the judge is okay, too.
Yeah, very well.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on this item?
I have another, maybe a sort of legal question, what the statute may require. Is there any allowance under the code to work out in a local agreement with another municipality? If that ever became of interest to the city, could we do something with Linden, share staff? Do we have any idea what the synergies could be? I mean, I don't know if they would-
I think it just takes them in a local agreement. The statute allows, and there are some cities that have come up.
I, my, my opinion is that this is a level of service that people in Pleasant Grove will come to expect and are used to and rely on. Numbers make sense, like you pointed out. Good discussion to have, I think it's worth having a conversation about this kind of thing. One of the, one of the possibilities, I think, that made, made this idea of interest to the PSB, and I don't want to speak for anybody on the PSB committee, but I think there was maybe a sense that there were some people in the city that wanted to see this all downtown. And if there was less square footage, there might have been the ability to get some parking and have it all be downtown. And without that, it may not be as realistically possible to have it all downtown.
So I'll switch hats on this one, and I'll, I'll say on the other side of the coin on this. Whatever, whatever the situation is, we don't know the motives behind why people are bringing these subjects up other than it's good to, to seriously look at what the costs of whatever we do are going to be as a city. And I think that in this particular case, rather quickly, we've been able to see here numerically and also service level-wise, this is probably not, not the right decision to shut down a court. That's my opinion.
Mayor, in regards to what Eric said, if there's future discussion about number of officers, number of square footage that the committee has questions about, how are we handling that in the future? Similar to what Eric said with, I mean, if there's questions about, we don't need this many beds for this many firemen, we don't need this many cells, how do we handle that in the future moving forward?
So there's a question back to the council then on this. The council commissioned the committee to study the, the feasibilities of various options and produce recommendations back to the council. In order for the, the committee to produce those recommendations and be able to stand behind them, they need to be able to ask the questions that they think are appropriate for them to be able to defend those answers. Ultimately, that committee is probably going to go out and, and advocate for whatever the council ultimately decides in terms of public safety buildings. I think that we need to be cautious. A lot of what I'm concerned about is when any member who speaks is judging another person's intent, particularly using inflammatory language. Not everyone is a public speaker, not everyone is aware that how they say, whatever they say can be interpreted by someone else to be a, a personal preference rather than a professional opinion. And I think we run into a lot of difficulties with that. I noticed our chiefs, they've experienced that substantially through this process. Over the course of the years, I've heard many times, members of our community referred to the projects as personal preferences on behalf of the professional staff. I don't think we hired our chiefs for that kind of job. They, they, they're technical, and they focus on the technical execution of the law, law enforcement, and on protecting the public in case of fire. So I would say with a little discretion, the council will be there. We can, we can join together and carefully manage through those. Other comments, questions?
I think the square footage after the programming, so I think if the chiefs feel comfortable and the judge feel comfortable in the square footage and the programming, then there, there isn't really- So is there a, still a debate going on about square footage?
I, I think what Scott told us, Scott Whitaker, did I get that right?
Wilkinson.
Oh, I said Whitaker.
I think he's a film producer.
Yes, he is, actually.
Scott, Scott Wilkinson, what he told us was, now that he has the programming numbers done, he's going to do some drawings of the layouts of the building's interior, floor plans. And he will label each one of those rooms with the individual usages that the judge and the chiefs have identified and put colored dots. and the chiefs have identified and put colored dots, is that correct? He's gonna put colored dots on them and then bring that material back so that, that between the technical staff and everyone, those can be, he can work with them to work on each question and, you know, find out, is that enough? Is that too much? Does it need to be pared back? Does it need to be increased? Is the flow correct? So I think there's still questions on square footage. Anyone else? Okay, so, can we send a message back then to the PSB on this?
Yeah, have we sent them this document, memory of the PSB?
We can send it.
To, to the committee?
Yeah.
Okay, if they'll move on. I'm sure they'll be interested.
As soon as Scott adds the other, yeah, the other information. And then, Council, is it, without going through a formal action, is it safe to say here that we've addressed the situation and this is not something that we're gonna take off the table at this time?
Play 100%.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Scott, can you give a little background or summary when you send that to the PSB that just, because some of the members of the committee weren't here tonight?
Yeah.
I think it just kind of summarizes what...
The council's discussion? Yep.
All right, moving on to item seven, this is a discussion on live streaming in city meetings. Who's bringing this?
That's me. So we've had, I can't remember when we started, probably six months ago, we made the decision that we would start live streaming our meetings. We chose at that time to go with a cheaper option that would essentially be a fixed camera, which we have here, our sound system. And, in fact, it took us, gosh, a month before we actually finally got the sound system plugged into the camera, so, we were having issues initially with sound. And then we have, I don't know, it feels like about every 10th council meeting we have, we have a technical issue that is above and beyond what me or David Larson can handle in regards to our, our hardware, or maybe even our software when it's all said and done. And, and we usually get it fixed by the next week, but we've had a couple of meetings where we didn't have a live stream because we were having an issue at that given time. So, the, like I said, the decision made was just kind of do the cheaper option. What we're asking the council is if you would like something a little bit more professionally done, it would probably be a little bit more expensive, that we as staff can pursue that, we can get some numbers for you, we can explain what that all means, there are other cities that stream, and in essence, they pay a company to do it. If that's a, if we want to increase the, probably the quality and the ability to do this with, hopefully, not as many technical issues as we currently have. But in essence, I mean, we, I think there was a couple of emails exchanged when we were having our issue, and I think a couple of council members had expressed an interest in this, so I put it on the agenda for, for your feedback.
Yes.
What is American Fork's cost? I mean, what is, what's our cost currently on this, to date?
Well, we bought, we bought the camera and the Teradeck system. The Teradeck is kind of what everything plugs into, and again, I'm not the technical guy on this, but in essence, it goes in there and that's what we eventually upload to YouTube as soon as our meetings are over. So, I, I've talked with American Fork, I don't remember, but that's part of the research we would start doing. We'll talk to cities that currently have it. There's plenty of companies right now that do this type of service, we can talk with them, we can get some ballpark numbers and probably bring it back, and if the council wants to pursue it, then we can do an RFP and work through that process. And then, I think we do need to have a discussion on the system to make sure it's portable, depending on what happens with the future of our, our building, and if we are gonna have a council chamber in the next few years, then we'll wanna, wanna account for that so we're not finding a system that's, we're not gonna use in three years or whatever. Or maybe technology changes by then.
I think let's just get the numbers and go from there. I mean, if it's a service, yes, it's not, we're not obligated to provide the service, but I think the citizens have come to expect that it's gonna be working. And for the past month, either the sound's down or the streaming's down, and so I think if we're gonna provide the service, we need to make sure it's a quality service. I don't think we obviously need to go the most expensive, you know, way out there, but it needs to be a quality service, especially where we're not taking away from you and David's time trying to fix it.
Yeah.
Because I know David spent a lot of time on this last fix too. And it's not just for city council, there's multiple meetings where we use it, and then, you know, being accused of, well, it was intentionally down, so people wouldn't know what was going on, it's just not very transparent. So, I think it'd be worth the extra money to pay for a better service. So I'd like to see the numbers. I mean, if we're talking a hundred thousand a year, that's one thing, but...
It won't be that much.
Did we do, Scott, did we do an RFP for this solution? We just acquired this.
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if I finished, but we, I think we're in about a thousand dollars on what we have. The camera, if I remember, was 250, and the Teradeck was 700 and some, and then we paid the sound people to come in and make sure we got it wired in, and I want to say we're probably just over a thousand dollars on our cost. And that's a, that's not an ongoing cost, I mean, that's a one-time cost, but our trade-off is, something goes wrong and you have David and I up there pushing buttons and, and it causes us stress and we don't like that. We just want a product that works.
Well, I, I wonder if it wouldn't make sense to use an external microphone? I think citizens had been doing filming with an external microphone and a, and a cheap camera and having more success, more reliably than we are, and it may be the integration into our sound system in general.
Yeah, it's what, what happened the last two meetings is, we had to, well, actually, I think it was three, three meetings ago when our Teradeck went down. So we had to kind of hard boot it and reset it, and when we did that, it, it kicked out the sound system, there was a, something we were supposed to hit and a software thing that we were supposed to do that we didn't do. So we had two meetings where there is a cam, there is a microphone on that GoPro, and it's just really soft, I mean, and we did that for a full month when we first started. We thought we had it all plugged in and we didn't. So we had those two meetings in a row with bad sound, but I can almost, if everything's working right now, and you, if you watch these when our sound is working and it's plugged in, you can hear everybody great, but the sound isn't an issue. The issue is it just crashes every once in a while, and then, if we haven't done it right when we've got everything back in line, we've had a couple of times where our sound is, has not worked. So, an external microphone, I don't, that maybe solves one issue, but it doesn't probably solve our larger issue, and that's when the system crashes.
What is the feedback problem?
Having lots of open mics at the same time.
I, I would say, we generally don't have it in council meeting, and I, I think maybe it's because we have our mics a little spread out.
Okay.
When we get a little more condensed, it happens in public safety building.
Meeting.
Meeting too, we start getting the feedback. And, I mean, we've had the sound guys in a couple of times to, to check that and try to figure that out, and again, we don't, we don't have somebody real technical on staff.
Which brings me to my next question, great segue. Is this a time to bring on a part-time IT guy? Girl? I don't know.
Council, Eric, you deal with this where you are, right? What's your experience? Obviously, Orem has technical people.
We have, we have lots of technical people, but it's always, I've always, I've already talked to this, I think it's wise to either have a part-time or something, someone here that, because we've placed all our eggs in one basket with one individual, right? Outside individual, and I think it'd be wise to have someone internally that would be wise to all the going-ons of IT and that, that can, can roam and know what's going on. It only benefits.
So are we at a, have we reached that magic point where, where the city really is behind the eight ball here as far as?
I'd hate to say, Orem, just because I'm there, they have like three or four programmers, right? Just programmers. And then, at least four or five IT guys, and they're on, they're at 93,000 or at, you know, almost 40? So I, I don't know, I think our time is, is already come.
Yeah.
Right? I, I just think the level of service that the staff needs, and I see that it'd benefit them to have at least a part-time person to, but that's a discussion for another.
Yeah. It does, it does seem like we need to kind of move with the times. You know, the, I'm hearing more and more in the community that people like to turn on their computer in the kitchen and observe these services or meetings while they're doing whatever they're doing. And when you come to expect it and it's not available, that's even more frustrating than, oh, that service isn't offered. So we, we probably should investigate not just this, but the speaker thing, because I think we're running into issues there. And if that means that we need to be looking at kind of a part-time technical person that can be here, then maybe that's what we need.
If it's okay, let's start with the, the streaming system, and let's get that figured out, and then we can circle back on the part-time IT. Because I, I'm not exactly sure what we would have that person do for 20 hours a week or 30 hours, maybe Eric could help us with that.
You'd more than find 20 hours' worth of work for, right? And the amount, I think on the contract that, that we put out would more than take care of that.
Yeah, I think that's probably true.
Are you saying a part-time person in lieu of our...
I don't know, that's, that's a discussion, I don't know. I mean...
Because we, right now, we have, you know, several people doing, it seems like a technical job, because we have Jeremy Roos and then Trent Bowen, and then sometimes, is it Jeremy Hall? Is that right?
Well, Jeremy Roos, Jeremy Roos, they're the same.
Katie.
Well, it seems like we have these different people that were painted to different things, if it's easier or less expensive to consolidate, I don't know, maybe that's just something we can look at in the discussion, but having one kind of technical person on staff might make more sense financially and more efficiently for the staff and in turn, the public. I don't know.
I mean, we can discuss this another time. I've just seen getting a part-time person that can do all that, sometimes, but we can, that's gonna be an employee of the city, not in contract.
Do other cities of our size, are they, do they have part-time people? Are they contracting out? Do we know?
Yeah, it's all over the place. There's some that have full time and there's some that contract. I mean, just, we, we've looked at this before, now it's been a few years, I want to say four or five years ago, we, we started heading down this road of not a part-time person, but actually a full-time person in-house as opposed to a, a contract person. And when you start crunching the numbers, we were doing better to have the part-time, or I said, not the part-time.
The contractual.
Yeah, if we're looking for a part-time 20-hour person to handle all of our IT needs, again, I'm not exactly sure if they can handle all that stuff, but yeah, we can.
I, I don't have a problem, in fact, Eric, he knows his rule, he's a lot better than I do. So we can sit down and list all the things our IT does for us and see if that's...
Another thing is, though, is that before, maybe the solution to the streaming problem is, could be handled by just hiring someone that actually knew what they were doing, and there would be no more out-of, out-of-pocket expense for, you know, change in equipment or whatever.
Well, there, if we do a, go with the company, there's gonna be a yearly fee. So there'll be one time set up and then there's a yearly fee we'll be paid, and that will pay for that service. If things go down, they'll be the ones that will fix that, so, that's...
So why don't we back up then to the discussion for tonight? We want that thing working every time there's a meeting in this room that needs to be broadcast. So if that means you need to consider a part-time individual, a contract specifically for that to get the current equipment working, or, we need, we need a solution. All right? And if you could bring that to us, we appreciate it.
Yeah, well, it'll take us a couple of weeks, but we should be able to turn that around pretty quick.
Okay, does that cover it? All right, let's discuss the July 19th city council meeting agenda. Starting with 9A, it's a continued public hearing. This is to consider for adoption. Consider for adoption in ordinance 2016-14, amending city code 10-14-20, urban design standards modifying the design requirements for developments in the Grove Zone, chapter of the Pleasant Grove City Code. And let's include that on the list of technical fixes that need to be addressed.
Could we please?
Well, that's a full-time job right here, just working this thing, so we could hire someone to do that. There's two hours on Tuesday.
Haven't gotten kettle corn, please feel free to help yourself.
Just noisy corn.
That's all right.
Okay, so we've known this was coming for some time. Council is aware that we've had several issues in the Grove Zone or development, issues with developments in the Grove Zone in regards to the design requirements. So we have a new proposed set of standards. I emailed you earlier in the day in regards to this, hopefully you had a chance to look at that, but if not, we'll just go ahead and breeze through it here. It is fairly lengthy in the ordinance when you get down to all the verbiage, but I think the general principles are fairly simple, so I will breeze through them and you let me know if it's not clear what we're talking about or whatever. So, I won't read through all of this, but we're just basically changing the text to get rid of the design theme concept and go to just good quality design standards. So that's kind of the first few paragraphs in, in the current code that we're changing some of the verbiage. So then largely, again, this is what we have in place currently. We have three theme districts, and we've struggled with those, especially with the interchange and the garden district, Mountain, we haven't had much concern with. But, the, the idea is rather than holding developments to a particular architectural theme and then having some not liking that and coming in asking for waivers that were kind of not being effective in, in our design standards, if that's what's happening. So, we're gonna just remove all those, we'll take the whole map out, so there won't be any districts, it will just be related to the Grove Zone, anything within the Grove Zone. So, the general design concepts include development design to provide quality construction, two or more buildings having a similar design theme, so if it's got at least two buildings in the development, they've got to have similar theme in their construction and, and design. Overall cohesive site development, architecture, materials and colors shall coordinate. So just general good design principles there. Compatibility, they need, the buildings need to be appropriate in scale, mass and proportion for where they're at, what we're looking for in the zone, in character with the theme colors and colors and other architectural features of significant adjacent buildings. We don't want to have something that greatly contrasts and looks out of place. Street facades, we're looking for large panes of clear glass at the main level, sidewalk-oriented, so that we do create, even though we're not talking about a downtown village, we are talking about something that creates a cityscape and is something that's not walled off or blocked off at the pedestrian view. We wanted to have a good street orientation. No opaque heavily tinted or reflective glass at the street facade level. Side and rear facades, all sides of buildings to meet the stand, these standards, so you don't have just a front or two sides and the back just doesn't comply at all. All, all sides of the building need to comply. Relief variation, architectural wall relief variations spaced at intervals of 30 to 50 feet, depending on the size of the development or the building. At least four types of relief features incorporated into the building design. So when we say relief, it's gonna, the wall's gonna pop out or the roof's gonna pop up or, so you have variation that way. Relief variation on single-story buildings shall comprise the full height of the building. Vertical separation, two-plus story buildings shall have architectural vertical separation between lower and upper stories. Building materials, we have a pretty good list of different materials there, and then we include other materials that are durable, may be approved. So we'll, we'll take those one by one. It's difficult to anticipate all potential types of good durable building materials at this time, but we have identified the majority that are commonly used. Exterior, no more than three types of materials per building. Mechanical screening, mechanical equipment shall be screened from streets and aesthetically incorporated into the building design. Building architectural orientation, or, this is kind of related to the streetscape that we talked about. we talked about, but orientation to the front of the property, at least one entry door, so we don't want to have our major street there, and then the whole backside of the building there. We want to make it feel, even though it might be not the main entrance, that it still feels like it's fronting onto the street, it doesn't feel like the back of the building. Corner lot orientation towards each frontage, so that they have those relationships to the street. Green building features include sustainable or green design features, and recommended that they have, indicate an effort to meet minimum LEED certification. And if LEED, if you're not familiar with that, what that stands for, it's Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. A lot of builders are looking to meet the minimum level there, there are some very high certification levels, that can be expensive, and we're fine with that, but we're not even going to require a minimum level, but we want to have them indicate to us, show us how they're working towards that. What are they doing to be conscious of energy and environmental design?
And most of that minimum level is just efficiency.
Right. So, we'll require with their site plan or their building plans to show us how they're meeting some of those efforts and what they're doing to meet that overall concept, but we don't want to hold them to the fire, that if they don't meet a certain certification level, then we're not going to approve them. We just want them to be conscious of that, show us what they're doing.
The highest level of that is a completely sustainable.
Right.
Do you have a question on the exterior, building materials on the exterior? Why no more than three types?
Well, it's, it does lean towards the architectural style, but it makes it so that there's some variety in the building, so you not only have relief variety, but you have materials variety, but you don't want to have too much, because then it gets to, I don't know, what's the way to put that? Gobby or gaudy or...
If I have stone and brick and...
Steel and glass or something?
Steel and glass, are you, are we saying?
Well, so, we wouldn't be talking about windows, we'd be talking about other structural materials. Okay? Site design standards, a lot of information in each one of these, but basically, we're looking at these elements as important and giving some guidelines to, the street and streetscapes, pedestrian circulation and street crossings, connection to master plan trails, paving and surface materials, lighting and furnishing, signage, walls. Now, a lot of this stuff we do cover somewhat in the code in various places, but this is going to be a good place to kind of pull it all together when we're talking about the site design. And then parking lots and alleys, orientation, lighting, landscape treatments, and access to adjacent uses in buildings. So, a lot of review has gone into this, pulling out some good features, we pulled a lot from Lehigh and their design standards, and felt like that was a good example, we looked at some others, and just felt like this is a lot better program for us to follow.
Is this like a summary of what's going to be reviewed?
Yes.
So, there's more material behind it?
So, in the email I sent you, I did attach the ordinance that gives the full verbiage. Yes. So, I can review all of that in more detail next week when we get into that, or if you have questions now, I can get into it. So, that's that one.
That's number A. Okay?
And did you mention whether this was by the planning commission yet?
Yes, they reviewed it at their last meeting, and they recommended approval.
Did they also look at the detail?
Yes, we read through the whole thing.
Great. Okay, B is to consider for adoption ordinance 2016-15, amending city code 10-15-41, street frontage improvements, adjusting the threshold requirements for when improvements are required, and the criteria for approving exceptions.
Okay, so, this is something else that we've been talking about for quite some time, we formerly referred to it as our waivers of protest ordinance, but that was kind of a misnomer. It's actually waivers of protest is something that could be signed if someone was granted an exception. So, we're just talking really about when we grant exceptions for the requirement to install missing street improvements. So, after a lot of discussion at the staff level, we took a proposal to the planning commission, and we got some good feedback from them. We went back to staff and reviewed what was said at planning commission, and we still kind of scratched our head on a few items, went back with another proposal to planning commission, they reviewed that, and now they have recommended that this be approved, and so this is what we've come up with. So, there are two areas that, in the current code, that kind of set a threshold for when we're going to require missing improvements. So, the first one was additions and remodeling. So, when a home is being added to or being remodeled, then if it meets, or passes a certain threshold, then we're going to require the missing street improvements, if there are any, to be installed. So, the first one for additions was if they added at least 300 square feet to their house, then that's the threshold, then they would have to do it, or, the other was to, if there's a $30,000 amount in the remodeling of the building or more, then that would also kick them over into that requirement. As we discussed, and kind of went back and forth with this remodeling thing, we determined that, number one, it was difficult to get away from a dollar number, we tried to do it by percentage and other things, but it was difficult to really come up with a logical way of looking at why that would be there, why that, even the dollar amount, the dollar amount is not good after 10 years, it's, you know, it's out of whack completely from when it was first installed, but we would have to continually change that. But then, we went back to the whole concept of why would we penalize anybody for improving their home? As far as not increasing the footprint of the building, they're putting in new carpeting, a new kitchen, whatever, we don't currently, and the code currently does not require tenant improvements for commercial buildings to do the same thing. Of course, in most cases, they're not going to be dealing with missing street improvements, but the code does accept them out as a situation, if that were to occur with commercial, that they would not have to do it if they're just doing tenant improvement. Well, that's basically the same thing with residential, it's an occupant improvement, and it's really, it's adding value to the home, which adds value to the community, so the recommendation from both staff and planning commission is that we don't use that as a threshold when the footprint of the building is not being increased. So, in other words, remodeling is being stricken, or recommended to be stricken as a threshold area. 700 square feet is the area of additions, which could either be a garage, or more bedrooms, or family room, whatever, that you're adding to the house, not finishing your basement, but adding to the footprint of the home, of at least 700 square feet. Within that amount, that allows an average-sized garage to be built. So, we felt that was necessary to allow for that, because we do otherwise require two-car garages in residential neighborhoods. So, if they're trying to comply with that, we felt like we should allow for that to occur. So, the recommendation is that 700 square foot be the new threshold for that type of a situation. And then accessory structures, currently at 500 square feet, changed to greater than 10% of the minimum lot size. So, currently, that's our requirement for, or allowable maximum, 10% of the minimum lot size is allowable maximum for an accessory structure to be built on a residential lot. Unless they get a condition of use permit, they can go up to 15%, but 10% is the permissible without a condition of use permit, we felt like that was a good way to do it. So, in other words, if you look at an R18 subdivision, 8,000 square feet is the minimum lot size, 800 square feet would be 10%. So, that does allow a little bit more room there, but if they wanted to do up to 15% for the accessory building, they could, but then that crosses the threshold for this requirement. And then, we reviewed when exceptions might be approved. So, this is the list that we came up with. So, building additions less than 100 square feet, residential basement finishes, replacement of any single-family residential home damaged by fire, flood, or similar natural disaster, any historically significant sites with recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, topographical or storm drainage issues unable to be mitigated as determined by the city engineer, the property is more than 300 feet away from existing improvements with a letter of recommendation from the city engineer, single-family corner lot where both frontages are missing improvements, city shall determine which frontage shall be completed. And this doesn't say the full verbiage there, that's in cooperation with the property owner, working with them on determining which is the best one. So, other changes that are being made to it, this is no longer a condition of use permit, there won't be any of these applications coming forward to planning commission, they either meet the criteria or they don't, and it's staff-approved. All exceptions require signing a waiver protest, currently, there's only a few of them that require that, all exceptions now are waiver protest. Waiver is not transferable to other property owners. Missing improvements must be installed when the property is sold, unless a new exception is approved, following a determination that the property still qualifies under one of the exceptions listed above. So, that's basically where we're at. Again, it's been reviewed several times by staff and planning commission, I feel like we've come up with a good program now.
Questions?
So, as a practical matter, this will make it a lot longer before we have sidewalks across our city, it's a lot less frequently triggered at our policy, if we comment this, it will be longer before we see sidewalks.
Well, and as a practical matter in response, it will be forever if this is the only way we're relying on street improvements to be installed, is when people do improvements to their property, it will never get there. So, we're trying to be as, using that word practical, as practical as we can, and responsible with the applications and the particular situations, what makes sense, what's a good threshold, what's good criteria for the exceptions. And so, if we're relying solely on our ability to not grant or to grant exceptions as our way of getting sidewalks and street improvements, we're really never going to get there. There's got to be other methods, and perhaps other methods are not practical at this time, but we need to kind of look at that in that light, I think.
And by the way, this room is about 900 square feet, Marty, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but they would have to build something that, is that, am I right? They would have to build something basically this size on their home to trigger.
Yeah, so, it's a significant addition.
I agree, Diana, I'm about 900.
900?
No.
Measure just by looking. So, when you said 700 feet, the intent was to make it possible to do a two-car garage without triggering?
Right. Right.
Other discussion? So, this will come up as a public hearing item next week. Okay, we'll go on to item C. A public hearing to consider for adoption ordinance 2016-16, to amend city code section 10-15-14, flag lot stem length, adjusting the stem and common stem development standards, specifically the stem maximum length criteria for new flag lot subdivisions.
Okay, so, Dennis Thane is the applicant on this request, he has a situation, and I'm going to jump forward, even though this is a code change which could affect other properties, we feel like the opportunities in the city are very limited where this could occur, but just to understand how it might be applied, I'm going to jump forward to his particular situation. He owns property in Pleasant Grove and Cedar Hills, and currently, the one in Pleasant Grove is a flag lot, as you can see, but he would like to be able to access his Cedar Hills property, which currently is not available to be accessed through any roads in Pleasant Grove or Cedar Hills, and in working with the surrounding property owners, they're not willing to grant any access or have any development plans in the near future. So, he's basically a landlocked piece of ground, and has approached Cedar Hills to be able to boundary adjust his property into Pleasant Grove, and they have denied him that. So, he's kind of stuck in his situation, and he wanted to see what he could do with that. So, the proposal is to allow this second lot, the Cedar Hills lot, to become a part of a new flag lot subdivision, so he would have two lots there, both accessed off of 4,000 north, down on the south end of this property. But it would be a subdivision plat that would need to be approved by both cities if he were to do it that way. The likelihood of that is not really known, but he will just have to see if that's something that Cedar Hills will approve. So, what it will take is, now, this isn't showing the inclusion of the current lot, it's just showing the stem, the length of the stem going to the second lot up into Cedar Hills is just shy of 400 feet. So, his request is, currently, the maximum allowable access road on a flag lot is 300 feet. Now, there was some criteria used in why that maximum, most of that was for service provision, both utilities and emergency services, I think most of it is related to emergency services. This proposal was reviewed by our fire marshal Drew Engeman, who said he doesn't have any concern with the length of it, as long as there's a good turnaround, and that this would be a very limited situation for applicability. Okay, so, I've shown you Dennis Thane's situation, let me show you what the verbiage proposal is in the code. So, currently, the maximum length is 300 feet, period. So, his proposal is to add, an extension to 400 feet may be approved only for landlocked properties where there is no access available through planned roads, as shown on the Pleasant Grove Streets Vicinity Plan. Also, the extended length and turnaround must be approved by the city fire marshal. So, we spoke to Dennis about this particular situation, recognizing on a staff level that there are very little, if any, additional properties that might qualify for this particular situation or code, and that perhaps another way that he could pursue his situation would be to seek a variance from the Board of Adjustment. He chose to go with his application on amending the code, not sure, or not having confidence in whether or not a variance could be approved on this situation, so this is his request to amend the code.
Can you back up to the picture? So, the one that's zoomed in just a little bit more. So, which parcel is he trying to develop?
The Cedar Hills property. So, that's currently, so, you've got, I don't have a pointer here, but you see the, in the Pleasant Grove site, you've got a home right there, so it is a flag lot right now that's developed as a, it's not fully developed with its access, but... This is, Dennis lives here, but he also owns this property and this property. Right, his son lives here, but he owns this as well. Yeah, this is Cedar Hills right here.
No, that's Pleasant Grove.
It's Pleasant Grove.
That's Shady Meadows, yeah.
I play soccer with the...
I'm sorry. Okay, you're right. Yeah, that's Pleasant Grove. So, because you have the city boundary there, you sometimes end up with goofy lines and access between cities.
How much of that area on the left side of that red box is Pleasant Grove?
Well, the colored area is Pleasant Grove.
Green area, green shaded.
The green area, green shaded area, the aerial view is Cedar Hills.
Or a reason, wouldn't approve just order a road right off the cul-de-sac?
Well, other than that's two properties that, not sure if they would work with us or not, I don't know. The difficulty is you've got two city boundaries there.
Did Dennis talk to those two property owners to see about the movement?
I believe he said he did, he's approached all the surrounding property owners. I mean, we can get written verification that he's spoken to them all, but in my mind, trying to pull something off of here, I'm not sure if that's the best way, in my mind, this might be the better way.
Who would provide the services, who would give them sewer and water and all that, would we?
Would we?
Cedar Hills would have to provide the, well, you know, that's something that'd have to be worked out with the property owner, right? You know, this, again, we're not discussing the particular development plan of Dennis Thane's property. But again, it's an example of how this code might be applied. But all of those details have not yet been spelled out.
I guess the question, the question is if the property that's intended to be developed and which is the request for the variation is being made, bring a 400-foot stem boundary of another city. I don't know. I'm a little bit at a loss on that one, Ken. It seems strange that Pleasant Grove would entertain a 400-foot stem parcel that it has absolutely no jurisdiction.
Okay, well, and again, this is private property, so it would be their maintenance of the stem road. So in creating a new subdivision plat, this, the lot would be cut right here. This would be one lot. This would be a common stem road that's maintained by both of these properties. So it's still private property maintained by the owners. So there's not, there's not really a whole lot of involvement with the city there.
Just a thought, should, you know, I know our fire marshal looked at it, but it really, shouldn't it be Cedar Hills' fire marshal? Because to me, that is a service nightmare for public safety. I mean, what's their address going to be? You've got to go all the way around to try to get access up into this area that I can see problems with it.
Well, I, I mean, we're just talking about access to that property. Dennis, if he's going to develop that Cedar Hills, he's going to have to deal with Cedar Hills on services.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That's not going to be our issue. My assumption is Dennis has tried to work with Cedar Hills on getting access, and he can't, and so his option number two is to come to us. And if we say we're not interested, we're not going to change our flag lot, then that's where he's at. He's not going to have access unless he continues to try to work with the neighboring property owners. It's on Dennis, really, to get that all figured out. But he's asking for an exception, and I think our decision is to say whether we're okay with that or not, and if we're not, that's fine. He's probably stuck, and if we are okay with extending the flag lot, like Ken says, it's a private drive. Other than that, his development, building permit, all that stuff's through Cedar Hills. He's got to get that all figured out with them.
Did you say he requested a boundary adjustment?
Yes.
Into Pleasant Grove? Did they give a basis for their denial, or just denied it?
They say no to anything that wants to come into Pleasant Grove, as a matter of policy.
Well, they, I mean, we boundary adjusted Tracy Flinders. We've done that before, I mean, in the last few years. I, I mean, I haven't talked with Dennis, I don't know specifically. So maybe, maybe we shouldn't speak for the city of Cedar Hills.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
As a council. Yeah, that's what I'm saying is, we're just talking access. Everything else is between him and Cedar Hills. Okay. Any other discussion, council?
No.
Okay, should we move on to D? Item D is a public hearing to consider for adoption in ordinance 2016-17, adjusting the boundaries between Pleasant Grove City and the city of Cedar Hills. Did I get this? Did I just misunderstand what I, okay.
So this is the request that came from Gina Davis with regard to boundary adjusting. The council indicated that you were willing to consider the petition. So we've adopted a resolution. We've waited the required amount of time. A public hearing is scheduled for you to allow public comment on whether or not we should go forward with the boundary adjustment, and in ordinance, we'll be prepared actually making the boundary adjustment for your consideration. Have changed your mind, or have some reason why you no longer think it's a good idea, you're still free to discuss that next week to public hearing.
Any discussion? Okay, let's move on. Item 11A is a discussion on Lion Center Maintenance.
Ms. Tina.
Ms. Tina.
Pardon me?
Ms. Tina.
That subdivision.
Tina.
Oh, I guess I did. Action items ready for vote. To consider for approval, a final plat for a three-lot subdivision called Forest Phillips Development Plat A, consisting of approximately .47 acres on property located at approximately 10 South 400 East, R17 Zone.
I'm sorry, I thought I was done. Okay, I'm sorry.
I anticipated he wanted to skip it.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have it on the develop, I mean, presentation. Slide, yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's really straightforward. There's only three lots there, but there is a concern with a small portion, and Marty might want to jump in on this. There's a boundary adjustment between lots that needs to be put into place, or approval of the plat subject to the agreement for boundary adjustment between two lots.
This is pretty common in our older part of town. We have wider right-of-ways than is our standard street cross-sections. This is no different here. It's three lots just to the south of Central Elementary School on the south side of Center Street, and they just want to acquire out to what our standard 56-foot local street section is. It's a small sliver, and so we just need to address that. We're working with them right now on a description of that, and then I was going to talk with Tina about that. That's one of the last things that we need to get finished up, and then their plat will be ready for recording.
So does that mean it'll be part of next week's discussion?
Yes.
Any questions? Okay, 11A, discussion on Lion Center Maintenance. So we have structural issues with the Lion Center that's causing concern with our center stage being there and having numerous kids in there, whether they're dancing or warming up or whatever they do. We need to take a look at the structural integrity of that building. In order to do that, first of all, we have to remove the asbestos, and so we have a cost $27,000, which we'll go over next week and talk about how badly, in essence, we want to do some of this. So we have the asbestos removal, and then we'll need to pay an engineer to look at the structural integrity, and then we would have the cost to actually fix, the engineering cost to fix the structure. So there's, this could get into some pretty decent dollars when it's all said and done, so we'll have the discussion next week, starting with the asbestos, and get the feeling from council on how you want us to proceed on the Lion Center.
So, did you say that we have to remove the asbestos before we can even do a structural analysis?
Yep. I think so. Isn't that, Dionne, has you been working on it?
Yeah, we need to move it. We need to break it. It's an old building.
All right. Any other questions? Okay.
It's a little more than that. Well, it's like 24, 26, I can't remember, but that was both upstairs and downstairs.
Oh, really?
That's, you only need to touch the upstairs? Yeah. Do what we need to do with the basement. Those figures are.
Okay, and then we jump down to items 17 and 18. So 17, we adjourn and reconvene as the redevelopment, the redevelopment agency of Pleasant Grove City. We're going to review and approve the minutes of June 7, 2016, and June 21, 2016, and adjourn. Is that just a minutes thing? Okay, and then we come back, and there's nothing else on the agenda. So that concludes the 19th. Okay, coming back to tonight, neighborhood and staff business. Libby, did you have anything for us? Okay, Ken?
Nothing else.
Sherry?
I just bought 11 tables and about 40 chairs for the library for about $2,000.
Wow.
So I keep dropping businesses that are going out of business and getting deals off of them. So we've got a whole bunch of stuff in storage, just waiting for when we get all of the improvements done. It's going to be done.
That's awesome. Thank you, Sherry. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Tina? Nothing. Scott?
Just, we're working on a couple big economic development projects, and I think council's aware of both these, and publicly, we can't necessarily talk names just yet, but we had lunch today. Diana represented us, the mayor pro temp, and myself with one of these developers that's looking at the Grove to do, I'm not sure how much it really would cost, tens of millions of dollars of investment into our community. And I think we had a good meeting, and we'll find out kind of how things are going to progress there, but.
Not being home.
Good luck.
And then the other one is, I've been sending emails out that we want a tour facility in West Jordan that wants to come and build a new facility in Pleasant Grove. And so I've sent you an email on some potential dates in the next two weeks. So I've heard back from Ben and Eric, so if you can check those emails and just let me know what dates work for you, so I can solidify that with them.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, Denise? David? Dionne?
Real bad, too bad.
Yeah.
Nice, bro. It was a nice day. Speaking of Sherry's tactic of getting good deals, I was telling the Rex guys that the Sports Authority and Orem is going out of business, 60% off on sporting equipment, if you're interested in any of that, so. There's some good exercise equipment, football, soccer balls. Get some good deals.
Dave? Anything?
I'm thinking really quick. So, repeat productions. I think that you're all aware that they're shooting a film. They have engaged the fire department. Part of that magnetic draw that we have, I guess. They don't really know what they saw. However, as part of the continuity, they're shooting in the station and around the station, but they're also using some of the apparatus. They'll be covering up the name, but as part of that continuity during, it kind of mushroomed a little bit. As they're coming to the station, they wanted to have something in the background, and it just kind of grew from there. So we are actually going to let them take, with a couple of our guys, one of our fire apparatus. And it will actually be in Heber, a few hours during one night, during a night shoot. They're paying dearly for that. Which is okay with me, because my guys overtime and then pays for the engine too. But when you watch the show, watch for our apparatus in the background, but just don't expect to see our name. But I better tell you, so if you're driving through Heber in the middle of the night, and you see our engine, you go, hey, what's happening? You'll know that's what's going on.
Chief, I don't know if you're aware, I was in the sandlot. Yeah, I don't, I don't let an opportunity go by to share that. So I was in the sandlot when I was 14, and I'm happy to do cameo appearances, we can negotiate. So if you see the production manager on site.
I'm not the producer. I'm providing.
Well, but you obviously have contact.
I was through Heber at midnight.
Yeah, I mean, if they, so if you see them again, if you're working out negotiations, just give them.
With those people next time, I'm telling them.
Okay, I'm on IMBA, so just.
Looking it up now.
IMDb.
And she's on IMBA also.
I don't even know IMBA is.
Okay, anything else?
Probably, but I can't remember what it was.
We received a grant award this week, notification from the Attorney General's Office on our involvement with Internet Crimes Against Children. They gave us a $20,000 grant to continue our work in that area.
Fantastic. Wonderful. Congratulations.
Who applies for that?
Lieutenant Mott singer is in charge of that grant.
Great.
That was, I believe, the second largest grant award. So that kind of tells you the involvement they're doing. There's a, tomorrow, the state Capitol will be going up there. There's a press release they're doing for the operation we were involved in, Predators, the child sex predators that we did.
And so you just recently awarded this grant?
This week, yes.
That's cool.
Great. Anything else?
Oh, thank you.
Marty?
One other thing that we'll need to get on the agenda is, we did have the bids received today for the Garden Drive Waterline Project and Street Reconstruction Project, and I just remembered that it's not on the agenda, so. But we did receive the bids, they looked pretty good. We'll get a bid tabulation together and get that out, and it looks like we're in our budget good, so. And we did have our nice geyser out there on Garden Drive on the fourth. Many of you maybe seen the nice little video. And so that water line was already planned a year ago to get replaced, because we knew that we're having more and more leaks out there.
What was the video?
The video just showed that the water leak essentially, and then it started spraying in the air.
Like a resident took the video or something?
Yeah, on a cell phone. So I saw it, somebody forwarded it to me, yeah. Nice little geyser, but we had another leak out there today. So we usually get a couple leaks a month out in that area. We really want to try to address some of those concerns in that area, so we've, anyways, we're moving forward with a project out there that will hopefully get that taken care of, and then Garden Drive will be reconstructed, so it's in pretty bad condition as well. Pleasant Grove Boulevard happened. The portion that we were trying to get fixed, the milling and paving was done on Sunday. Everything went off, I thought, pretty well. I think it'll take care of the problems with the potholes that were forming on that outer lane. We, they did have a machine breakdown that was supposed to come in and do the micro-surfacing right after they got through with the paving, and so they're going to postpone that. The process of doing the micro-surfacing on that strip will only take a couple of hours, so we'll likely coordinate that in the very early morning to where we'll have very little impact, anybody, on that. But that's going to be rescheduled for the end of this month.
Are you going with the micro in lieu of popcorn?
So, if, a couple years ago, we got rid of the open grated surface course popcorn. We took that off and put in a micro a couple years ago, so there was already a micro on it. We wanted to make sure that the new pavement has a seal coat on it to try to preserve that. So we're just paving the, or sealing up the patch. Because of the delay of that, we were anticipating to be able to start striping 13th West, 11th North, Pleasant Grove Boulevard, now that that was supposed to be done. But now that the micro's not done, it doesn't make sense for us to do that and then cover it up and then do it again. We're going to move forward on getting the striping done on 11th and 13th. That was questions that had for me today. So we're going to move forward on that, portion of that, and then we'll come back and hit the Boulevard closer to the end of the month. Locust Ave is going well. They've started milling the original surface, and we'll be, we're doing what's called cement treated base on this section to try to stabilize some of the base out there. It's somewhat new. It's new for us, for sure, and definitely excited again to see how that works out for us. But, so the water line's in, Third South will be paved hopefully in the next week. Locust Ave is going to take all the way until the middle of August, so we get another month of getting that finished up. West Star Gas, First East. You can see right now they're still in State Street. There was some miscommunications from the previous project manager as to what needed to be done on State Street. They hadn't finished a section from Taco Amico down to First East, and so that's what they're currently doing. Soon as they get done with that section, they'll be jumping onto First East and closing down northbound First East to get that, what we've talked about before. So right now, it's open except for no southbound turns onto State Street, but they will be closing down northbound as soon as they jump over and do that other section. They anticipated it's going to take them a few more weeks once they make that move to get everything cleaned up and done in that area. So it's likely going to be towards the first part to middle part of August, and then they'll be completed.
Who's Galen?
Galen retired. So he's, his phone number no longer works, I found out last week.
It'll be hurtful.
It is, yeah. Pleasant Heights, I thought you guys might be interested about all these fun projects. The pole was removed today from Century Link, so that was a good thing to see done. I got a message from the developer today indicating that on the 28th, Staker Parsons will be moving in. So in two more weeks, they'll be in there to do the road and get the roads finished up and. So in two more weeks, they'll be in there to do the road and get the roads finished up and cleaned up. And so that should be done in the next, again, by the middle of August, kind of their deadline to get all that done. They should, they are on schedule to get that completed. Fix the fire hydrant that was leaking, just so you know.
You did fix it?
It is done, yes, today.
Awesome.
Murefield's is done. So they just have a few little items that they're finishing up on their push list. But everything's out there. They're selling lots and we'll be moving forward.
How about, Marty, you talked a little bit about Pleasant Grove Boulevard. Is any of that covered by the previous crew that did the work? I mean, it seemed like there were clear defects in the way Pleasant Grove Boulevard was originally done.
So Pleasant Grove Boulevard was constructed in two thousand two, three? Is that about the time period, about ten, twelve years ago? When they did that, they put on a treatment called an open graded surface course. And it's essentially a one inch thick section that allows the drainage to go through the material. So it's open. We, a couple of years ago, took and milled that off because it, it only has about a six to eight year design life on that and it started to come off by itself. So we said, okay, we don't wanna do this again because the open graded surface course, it's fairly expensive and it has a limited life cycle. And so we milled everything off and we came in with a micro surface. Well, what we've seen out there that happened is that there is a joint where you saw the potholes form. And it just happens that that joint is right in the wheel path of all of the traffic going there. And so I think what has happened is some, some, what it appears to be anyways, I don't know the exact cause, but it looks like water's gotten down into that joint. And by doing that and then putting all the traffic right on it, it's caused it to pop up and break. What we saw is that it was breaking all the way down to the first lift. So when Pleasant Grove was paved, it was six inches thick. They did three inches. Then they came and did a second layer of three inches. And we saw that it went down and it stopped at that first lift. And so what we did with this project this year was mill that off. There really isn't anybody to go back on to say that they caused that joint to have water enter it and things like that. It was something that we'll be watching in the future as far as making sure it gets sealed, cracks sealed and things of that nature. Getting it out of the wheel path will help us. And that's what we did with the mill, is we got it out of the wheel path. We, we feel like it'll be a good solution for us. We didn't reconstruct the whole road. We didn't spend a lot of money on it. We did, I think it ended up costing us around seventy-five thousand dollars to do what we ended up doing there. Or with the micro surface, it will be. And, but that's a lot cheaper than milling the whole thing down and redoing the whole thing. We felt like it was a good intermediate fix because the rest of the road looks like it's in pretty good shape, other than that one spot, so.
Thanks.
Anything, Kathy? Diana?
Couple of things. First of all, I just have to say, we did have a delightful meeting today. And the weather could not have been more perfect. We came out of the meeting and there was temp in all of her glory. And it was just like exclamation point. We are that good. Anyway, it was a lot of fun. So a couple of things. I drove past, so Pokemon has, has, everybody knows what Pokemon Go is, first of all. So it's a game, Dionne. And it's on your cell phone. So Nintendo and Google Earth made a really cool game.
Or not.
That steals your private data off your phone.
Okay, so if you have Facebook, you have already given permission to, the biggest data stealer of all.
We've had a couple kids almost hit.
Are you serious?
I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting to this point. So, so what you do is you have, you have, you're driving along and if you're on the game, then the Pokemon character, there's different levels and they all have different rewards.
It's augmented reality.
Yes. So, so I drove past the city park. Well, first of all, the PD is a spot. Did you know that? Okay.
Social Library.
And the library.
And the.
So I counted eighteen people in the city park running around the sidewalk, holding their cell phones.
Visible character.
Yes. They look so crazy when you don't know actually what they're doing at first. But this was the cool thing. So there were like four groups of kids, about like eight, eight in a group. And then there was this dad kneeling on the ground with his little ten-year-old son and they were chasing it. I thought, this is, this is a good thing. I did see on the news that there was a guy who has not literally walked anywhere for ten years and yesterday he put twelve miles on his self.
The question is why? Why hasn't he? Has he just not wanted to?
Anyway, so I don't know if, I don't know, first of all, I don't know.
Do we need an ordinance?
Those are spots. And I don't know how you get off of them if you don't want to be on them. And I know that there are some businesses that are trying now very desperately to become one. I know Adams Red Barn out on Sixth West and Eighteenth is on it.
How can they do that, just like to private people?
It's generally public property.
They just pick locations, the Nintendo Corp. What we need to do is pass an ordinance that Nintendo has to repair all the streets that go to any locations in Pleasant Grove, take their nine billion dollars and put some of it into Pleasant Grove.
So chief, what's happened with the kids?
They're not looking at where they're going. They're, they're running.
They're walking around and then they, they go, I guess they have to take off and try to catch it. They run out in roads.
What? I have seen people screech to a halt. It, it's just, you gotta watch it. It's just fun.
And reckless.
Just park outside the PD and just start watching people walk around the park.
This is so weird.
Like a new, it's, it's grounds for new ordinance, right? Distracted Pokemon chasing.
If you only had a drone. I'm into the library, then I have to check out a book.
Do they really for it?
Did you have anything else? In Sandlot? You're gonna abstain tonight? Okay. Sid?
No, thanks.
I do. On the PS, on the PSB, I think August third, I think if, if we're discussing the pipeline area, I think we better get on top of things and talk to the citizens that actually live down in that area. I think we better send out a little notice or something, invite them to the August third meeting or something. I just, because if we're gonna just all of a sudden drop this on them, it's not gonna be good for us, so. I, I'd like to see something like that. Because we do have time for public to speak now, so I think that'd be a good time for them.
Okay, thanks.
That's it.
Anything else? No? Ben?
I'm good.
All right. Then we need to adjourn and go into an executive session.
Can we do that? What Eric's suggesting? Like contact them?
Yes.
Okay. I should hear. It's all in here.
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Technology. All right. So we need to adjourn and go into an executive session.
Here, I move that we, I move that we go into executive session to discuss reasonably pending, imminent, or anticipated litigation, any kind of litigation or legal issue.
A motion by Ben, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
This honestly is the best kettle corn I have ever had.